Good evening, I would like to call to order this November 13th meeting of the Santa Barbara Unified School District Board of Education. Dr. Cash, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Please rise. Ready, begin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we do have Spanish language translation available this evening. Ms. Limón?
Tenemos traducción en español para cualquier persona que necesite. Tenemos audífonos en la parte tercera del cuarto.
We also do have headsets available for the hearing impaired. And Dr. Cash, that brings us now to introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions.
Thank you very much, President Deacon. We have a full house tonight for a couple of really great reasons. We're going to start with our student report because I think we all benefit from hearing from our students. We have two fantastic students from Santa Barbara High School, Yvette Gill and Daniel Pino, who will present the student report.
Hello, good evening. My name is Yvette Gill. I am a senior at Santa Barbara High School and this year's ASB president. Unfortunately, Daniel was not able to join me today due to an illness, but I am here to report out and give updates on behalf of San Marcos, Dos Pueblos, Alta Vista, La Cuesta, and of course, Santa Barbara High School. Starting with San Marcos High School, in regards to athletics, the girls volleyball team lost to Merrymount in their second round CAF game. And it was actually the first time in 10 years that they had gone to CAF. Their fall play, Antagon, is showing the 15th, 16th, and 17th in the auditorium with a special stage. This year, they're doing it with only seats for 100 people in order to make a more intimate experience. Their new gym roof is currently under construction and it is expected to finish soon. A teacher on campus is having a warm clothes drive for those that were affected by Hurricane Sandy. The boys' basketball has their first home game on December 21st, in which various students are really looking forward to that, seeing as basketball is one of their most popular sports. The boys' water polo team lost in their CAF match. The boys and girls cross-country are both moving on to CAF playoffs. And the girls tennis team lost to CAF, and they lost to Corona Del Mar. The boys' football team had a hard season this year and lost in their final game versus Ventura. The leadership class was put on a form for the school board candidates recently. And lastly, San Marcos High School had their first student representative meeting, in which a representative from each second-period class came together and discussed ways to improve on testing scores. For Dos Pueblos High School, athletics, girls golf won first place in China League this year. Boys cross-country won China League, and it's the first time since 2006, and they are advancing to the next round of CAF. Girls cross-country also went to CAF, however, they did not advance. The football team this year tied in first place for China League, but lost in their first-round game of CAF to Culver City High School. Girls volleyball took second in China League and lost in the first round of CAF. And the boys' water polo team advances to the first round of CAF. Over 700 students signed a pledge during Red Ribbon Week to be drug-free. November is severe illness awareness month and Mexican heritage month. A Midsummer's Night stream will be put on on November 15th through 17th in the Performing Arts Center. Dos Pueblos is participating in the jean drive in support of La Cuesta High School. They are also having a canned food drive, supporting the Food Bank, which goes through November 19th. And next month, they will also have a food drive which will benefit the unity shop. Lastly, they will be participating in a toy drive where toys will be donated to the unity shop going from December 5th through the 19th. For Alta Vista Middle College, they participated in the Santa Barbara City College Plato Essay Competition, where students read and analyzed Plato's Plato, and also attended a lecture by the philosophy professor, Joe Lee. During the election season, the middle college had a debate viewing party at Santa Barbara City College cafeteria. Students were able to analyze the forum, and they also analyzed different magazines and California propositions. They also participated in the My Vote California Mock Election. They're also doing an activist art project, where students will create three-dimensional activist art after the work of its local Chinese artist. Lastly, students are educated weekly on current events through Time Magazine, assignments, and reflect on their knowledge and understanding through personal reflection. La Cuesta High School, students took a field trip with Cal Soap to Cal Poly. Thirty-five students went on November 8th. Jeans for Teens Drive is taking place to benefit Casa Esperanza and Noah's Anchorage. For all those interested, you can bring new or gently-used jeans to La Cuesta High School by November 19th. Read for a Claus is taking place on December 7th at La Cuesta High School from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. Children, families from Franklin and Adelante School have been invited to have a photo taken with Santa and receive a book while enjoying some popcorn, cider, and hot cocoa. Lastly, leadership students are selling frozen pastries as a fundraiser for Grad Night to raise funds for their bus. Lastly, Santa Barbara High School, athletics, fall sports had a great season this year. Girls tennis won China League and advanced very far in the CAF this year. Boys water polo actually has a match tomorrow in the CAF quarterfinals. Football had a great season this year. They ended up tying for first place in China League. It was the first time since 2001 where they won China League. They also had a first-round CAF football game this past Friday, and unfortunately, lost to Cathedral High School in a very close match, but they had a great season this year. Girls volleyball also had a great season, losing in the first round to CAF. And also, girls golf had a great season this year. Former player Salisa Ortega, she actually won first place in China League for individuals. It's a great job for her. And now, winter sports are going to start to take place. I'm especially looking forward to that because I play basketball and I'm a senior this year, so I'm very much looking forward to that. We should have some great sports this year. And on the ASB leadership side, on Thursday, November 15th, is Harry Potter versus Twilight Day. It's a spirit day that we do. We actually invite the entire school to dress up in their favorite Harry Potter or Twilight character. And we invite students to come out to the quad, which is kind of our Greek, I guess, theater, during lunch for a quidditch match. In addition to the Harry Potter versus Twilight Day, we will also be having a quad group, where we invite local food vendors to resell food to the student body. That'll take place on Thursday. A few weeks ago, on Halloween, October 31st, we had a Halloween carnival. We hosted a costume contest, and we also actually worked in conjunction with Red Ribbon Week and had students be able to pledge that day as well. On November 1st, we hosted a blood drive in the gymnasium, where students were able to come, students, teachers, parents, all able to come and donate blood. I donated blood myself, and it was a very exciting experience. On November 9th, this past Friday, we had a ceremony in honor of Veterans Day. We said the pledge, we honored the members who had fallen, and their names were on a rock that we were able to acknowledge on Friday. The Drowsy Chaperone, our school's fall musical play, is going on this Thursday through Sunday. And it is a very great fall musical this year, so I definitely encourage you to go and see that. And also, on the final note, this past Sunday, I was able to attend the TEDx American Riviera event. They actually chose students from Santa Barbara, San Marcos, and Dos Pueblos High School. Two students from each school were able to attend this event, and it was the first time they actually were able to involve youth. I'm not sure if anyone's familiar with the TED Talks that they have, and were able to, a full day at the Bakara is just filled with speakers and presentations. And it was really great that they got to involve the youth this year, and we were able to participate in that. And that is all of the school board reports. So, is there any questions?
Thank you very much, Yvette. Great presentation. Well, we have two recognitions this evening to begin with, then I'm certain we'll have a couple of more. The first is Dos Pueblos High School's mock trial team is here to give us a brief recap of their New York experience, which would have been extraordinary in and of itself, but was made very memorable with the presence of Hurricane Sandy. I'd like to have Bill Woodard, the coach and mentor, come forward with his students and share a little bit about their experience in New York.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you. As I said last spring, there's no question who the smartest people in the room are. I would like the whole team to stand up briefly right now, please. Being invited to this tournament was an honor in itself. It's kind of like Top Gun of mock trial, only the best of the best get invited. These students spent their entire summer learning federal case law and preparing to compete against the best. We fundraised, they fundraised over $20,000 to, and we needed more after being there longer. And journeyed to New York, kind of as an unranked team. And we ended up, they ended up dominating the tournament, the only undefeated team going through the entire tournament, filled with 18 state champions and seven national champions, all the way to the final round on the day the hurricane struck. In the finals, we ended up losing a heartbreaking 4-3 decision, one of the judges by only one point. But as someone said, there are three judges who think this is the best mock trial team in the entire nation. We are all bursting with pride, all their parents are here, and two of their coaches could not be here, but one of their coaches, Joel Block, I'd like to stand up real quickly. Joel is a district employee, works at Santa Barbara Charter on Galleta Campus, along with Maureen Gratton and Scott Campbell, three individuals who have donated thousands of hours of their time over the last few years to this program and to these kids. And I couldn't have done it without them. And I turn over to kids, I can talk all night, but I'll let them do the rest of it. Here are three captains.
Hi, I'm Namisha Shinde, and I just wanted to begin with thanking everyone for their support, our peers, our teachers, and our community. We could not have done it without you guys. We had an incredible experience there, and personally, I think that had we come in first, or had we come in 36th, the experience would have been amazing in and of itself. We met incredible people, and it truly was a trip of a lifetime.
Hi, my name is Alice Malley, and I just wanted to add on to that, that this competition, it was such an honor to get to compete against the best teams, not only in the nation, but in the world. We had to learn how to try a federal case, a civil case, and getting to compete against such talented students was really a test of our skills and abilities and was so much fun. But the experience was even more than that. We got to meet these students who are so talented and friendly and smart. It was so much fun meeting teams from Florida, from Alabama, from Scotland and Ireland. We had movie parties with the Scottish team. And even more than that, we were lucky enough to get to tour New York City, see a Broadway show, take a bus tour, see Times Square. And it was so much fun to go as a team and really get the New York experience. It was really incredible.
Hi, my name is Hannah Cruz. Now, as you probably all know, it did get a little windy in New York while we were there. But even though we had to have an extended absence from school and stay in New York so long, we really just want to thank our peers and the community so much, because coming back, we were met with such support and such welcome, financially, as well as teachers understanding our absence, and our peers just welcoming us back with open arms, that it just really enriched the experience that much more, and we just want to thank you all so much again.
I'll just close by having Madeline Mathis stand up, who was named Best Defense Attorney in the tournament. And as our Measure A and B committee knows, Madeline, and our other Madeline, Madeline Centrella spoke at the rally back then, and I'm sure you were as impressed as I am by the way that they speak. But thank you very much for having us here tonight, we're honored to be here. Thank you.
Well, on behalf of the board, I would just like to extend my congratulations to the team and for all your support staff. We were following the progress. You probably know, I mean, we were getting regular updates. Of course, when the Sandy was imminent, we were getting a little bit more concerned about how things were going. But the experience you had, I'm sure will be memorable in so many ways, and it really sounds like you've made some terrific contacts as you move forward. And thank you for representing our district so well, because you really did a great job. Okay, well, thanks again. If you have homework to do, you can go now.
Thanks for the parents for coming tonight. Appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you for all of your help as well. I forgot to mention that there were DP alumni, mock trial alumni, that were also really watching how you were doing, all over the nation.
Well, next, a really important event occurred this past Tuesday, when our community came out and supported our district's Measures A and B. That event was fantastic, but it could not, would not, and did not occur without our Santa Barbara Education Foundation taking on that job and doing a fantastic job in working with our community to make sure everyone understood the importance of Measures A and B in the lives of every student in our community. And we owe them a tremendous debt of gratitude. And I see Sal Guareñas here, and I'd like him to come forward and maybe introduce some of the members of the subcommittee and...
Yeah, my name is Sal Guareña, president of the Board of the Santa Barbara Ed Foundation and co-chair of the A and B Committee. And my co-chair here is Todd Capps, for those of you who haven't met him yet. The foundation, we're absolutely delighted with the outcome of the campaign. There was nothing that we, as a foundation, could ever have done to get this kind of return for the effort than we did for running the campaign for A and B, and right on the heels of the campaign for W and X. So, approval by the voters was a real powerful signal that this community feels it's important, and they believe in the importance of locally investing in our local schools, and that this investment is an investment in a stronger community. So, in addition to the SBF Board members, and those of you who are SBF Board members, if you could stand for a moment to be recognized, okay? And we have some here in the backyard as well. I'd like to just acknowledge the board members here, who are here. And also, I'd like to recognize the campaign committee, and if the members of the campaign committee could also rise. And these are all people who gave their time to knock on doors and walk the neighborhoods and talk up the measures at farmers markets and concerts, and helped us just keep a steady presence throughout the community and make sure that people knew the importance of these two measures. And it couldn't have been won without everyone's commitment. And I'd like to also, the people who are volunteers as well, because, you know, we have parents, we have teachers, we have school staff, we have community members, as well as school board members, who on their own time knocked and walked and talked to people in the community. So, we're very proud of everybody's effort and the successful outcome, and so just thanks to one and all.
I just have to say that watching this group of people, after we lost W and X by such a small margin, kind of pick themselves up and say, okay, what do we need to do to make this happen? And they did every single thing that needed to happen. I mean, the ground game was incredible, the enlistment of parents, neighbors, yard signs everywhere. And I would like to ask everyone to thank everybody else who's not here, who also pitched in, because it really was a community-wide effort. And the students at UCSB were terrific as well in supporting education, because they knew, after talking to just a few people, how important this would be for the students in our community, having just come from high school, most of them themselves. So, it was a great night on Tuesday to be able to celebrate winning this election, and it means really good things for our students in the next four years. And we need to really recognize that our community really understands how important education is, and that it's something that they're willing to support. So, thank you to everyone.
Mr. Herron? I just, I want to point out, I've never seen such a strong leader as Sal. I mean, the whole team is good. But when you have a leader who will do every single thing that he asks of everybody else and do it twice as hard, you can't help but want to do it. And that's how I felt the whole time, Sal. Every time I got an email from you, I felt, I gotta do something. You know, it's just, you had your finger, and Todd, you too, but Sal, you had your fingers on everything. And I thought that made the world of difference to your volunteers and to everybody involved. When you see a leader doing it that much and that strong and that dedicated, you want the thing to pass. Thank you very much.
You're here is right. Thanks on behalf of the students. I mean, every day for at least the next four years are going to be enriched, thanks to your tireless efforts. And hopefully, you'll be paid off in the smiles and the great works that our students will be able to do as a result of that. So, thank you very, very much. I don't know what I'm going to do on Monday nights now. Have to have some way to still do something. Also, on Tuesday, we are hearing in the news about the fiscal cliff. Our federal government is about to fall off of, hopefully not. Our state government, I believe, avoided a fiscal cliff as far as K-18 education with the passage of Prop 30. And I'm excited that that kept our district at our status quo ante. I want to remind everybody, it's not more money for K-12 education, it just allows us to maintain the status quo, as opposed to cut over $6 million. I'm excited about the opportunity to continue working with our employee associations as soon as possible in order to begin negotiating the impact of the passage of Prop 30, which I believe will result in very important and intended benefits for our students. And hopefully, we'll get that wrapped up as quick as possible. And I'm very confident with the negotiating teams of both the employee associations that we will. So, that was also a wonderful thing to happen on Tuesday as well. Very importantly, on the back table are copies of our Theater Performing Arts schedules. You heard a little bit about it from Yvette Gill. I'd invite you to please get a copy of those. You still haven't missed a single performance, they're all coming up. A great opportunity to see those great kids in action, many of whom have benefited from the current parcel taxes that supported music, art, and theater arts in our schools. So, a great way to celebrate, continue the celebration of Measures A and B. At our next board meeting, we're going to welcome our new board members. We'll welcome the return of Ed Herron. Congratulations, Mr. Herron, on your reelection. And we'll be welcoming new members, Pedro Paz and Gail Idelson, who are also in the audience tonight. Congratulations to the two of them. And while we are very excited and look forward to welcoming those two new board members, tonight marks the last official board meeting, no, the last regular board meeting, for two of the greatest leaders our community has had for K-12 education. And I'm going to speak just a few words about each of them, and then I know I won't be the last speaker. So, first, I'll talk about our current president, Susan Deacon. Prior to her service on the board, Susan was a dedicated parent volunteer. And I was very fortunately personally to know her sons, Decker and Kyle. They graduated from Galleta Valley Junior High School and then Dos Pueblos High School. One of the things that Susan did immediately as a parent volunteer was see a need to have something done, and then she would not only step into the role of making it happen, but into a leadership role. And she did that very clearly with the Aquatic Center at Dos Pueblos High School. Once Susan decided to run for the school board, she became committed to closing the achievement gap as one of her number-one priorities between economically disadvantaged students, English-language learners, and their more affluent peers. She's always been a strong advocate for everyone in our system, for high expectations for students, teachers, parents, and administrators. She has stood on the side of having music instruction throughout our district, as well as strengthening math, science, and language arts. When I think of STEM, I'll think of Susan Deacon. When I think of sustainability practices, I'll think of Susan Deacon. Susan, thank you for your many, many years of service to the board. There'll be other people speaking, so hold on just a second. Now, I'm going to speak about Annette Cordero. Annette, thank you very much for your incredible service to every student in our community. You've been on the board since 2008, two terms as a school board member, 2004, excuse me. You said your focus would always be, and I'm going to quote you, I don't even know if you'll remember this, that our district needs to change longstanding practices, such as how we place students in classes, how we counsel them, how we discipline them, and when and what interventions are put in place, who teaches which classes, and whether, to what extent, we will continue to tolerate segregated classrooms. I would say that you are leaving the board with many of those changes have occurred and many in the process of occurring. During your tenure, you focused on providing, as I said, opportunities for every student in our community, and I commend you for that. And when I think of Annette Cordero, the voice in my mind will always be this quote. Having a translator translate at our schools and in our board meetings is the equivalent of having electricity on for our board meetings. It's essential. Right now, tonight, for the first time, we are actually having this board meeting simulcasted in Spanish, so that it can be heard on Spanish television. I know a longstanding wish of yours, I'm so sorry that it took all the way to your last regular board meeting to have occur, but I know without your dedicated persistence in making that happen, things like that are happening all around our community. So, thank you. We have a couple of gifts for the two of you, and then I know we have some other people that would like to speak. Of course, for our board president and our former board president, we have the awesome symbolic gavel. And we, I know, have other people. Our new board member, soon-to-be new board member. Why don't you let everybody know what's in the package? Somebody open it up.
This is a family photo that we took at the Santa Barbara Education Foundation dinner.
And the comment was that we don't have a picture of all of us together. So, I happen to have a camera, and now they have a picture all together.
That's really nice. Thank you so much.
So, I know we'll have comments from some board members. Mr. Herron?
Yeah. Well, Susan, four years ago, we joined together, and you have just brought such dignity and grace, and knowledge, and communication, all the things that are vital to the success of a school board. I just can't thank you enough. And I have something for you, but I'll talk about Annette also. It's been a real pleasure, Annette, learning from you. I mean, I have learned more in four years from you than probably any other time in my life, as how to be so compassionate and understanding human nature. And that's something that I learned from you. It's been nice sitting next to you, too. It's just, you've been very special, so I appreciate it very much. But at the Hope banquet, award ceremony, at the silent auction, I saw something I just couldn't pass up, thinking about Susan and Annette. So, I went ahead and made my donation and happened to win, but... I know how much both of you enjoy sports, and I know you're tied to Dos Pueblos. So, here's a lifetime pass to all sporting events at Dos Pueblos. And once a Don, always a Don. Again, a lifetime pass to all the Don sporting events. Now, I-
That was a great experience ever.
I have to say that it was promoted at the event as a lifetime pass. And yours says lifetime pass, but yours doesn't actually say it. So, it's signed by John Beckio, and you make sure that it's- I've got all of the A and B group here, and all the Hope people here. You make sure that they live up to their lifetime pass, so we can come back after the Education Foundation for false advertising. But I thank you both very much, and enjoy the athletics at the Don's and the Dos Pueblos.
I just have to chime in now, that I have known for a while now that there is going to be a special meeting in December, and so I was absolutely counting on this not being the last meeting. So, I didn't bring a hanky. And hopefully, I will do my weeping on December 4th or 5th, whenever that meeting is set, because it has been tremendous to work with both of you, Annette, so long-term. And I hate it when such an experienced member goes off the board, because the background knowledge, the history, it's just a huge loss to the district. But you both are, but just been amazing board members, amazing colleagues. And we've had some great times, celebrated student success together. We've had some really hard times, and we don't always agree on things, but to know that you're sitting up here with two people that will have your back, and that will understand, and that are open-minded, I really feel like we've listened to each other, we've all learned so much from each other. I'm looking forward to the new board members coming on. I know that that's gonna be a great experience, too, but I'm gonna be thinking of you on Tuesday nights for a long time to come. And I hope that you will, I hope you will stay involved. And you know that I'm gonna be calling. So, thank you for everything that you've done.
Well, I also thought maybe December. And it is, it's very bittersweet. Gail and Pedro, I'm so excited for the both of you, that you'll be joining the board. Susan, it's been an honor to work with you and serve as the vice president while you're the president. You've taught me a lot, and you are such an amazingly kind person, with the student interest always at the forefront of what we do. You will be missed. I will miss my green buddy. And thank you for everything you've done, and for also modeling for new board members like myself. What a great board member does, every single day worrying about the students. I know you and I have talked about nights that we have a hard time sleeping, worrying about what happens with the students, with the district, and that's real. That's something that comes from a place in our hearts, because we care about the students. Annette, my voice cracks as I say your name. For those of you that don't know this story, Annette was one of the individuals who first encouraged me to run for school board. And Annette, Annette knows the story, but so often, our students look for individuals who believe in them, and no matter how much we do, and no matter how much we've accomplished in life, Annette was the person that I looked for to believe in me when I decided to run for school board. And because Annette believed in me, I also believed in myself. And so, I think that so many students in our district have been so thankful, and have really benefited from having you here on the board, from being a voice. I think the gift that Dr. Cash and the district and Barbara have offered today is so special, because it's taken years for us to see a meeting, a simultaneously live cast in Spanish and English. That's a really big deal, and it's really been years of championing. And Annette, you've done that for a lot of students, all of our students, but especially our students who are most disengaged in our district. So, it is a tough loss. I know the families there, and they're really excited, and I've been going back and forth with them about Annette leaving, but thank you so much, Annette.
Well, I know both of you have family members here, and I know we'd love to hear from you. Everyone would.
Well, I knew Monique was gonna make me cry. First of all, I would like to thank my family who are in the audience. I have my husband, Chris, and my son, Corey, right here, and my sister, Martha, thank you, and my brother-in-law, David. And of course, they have been tremendous support for me throughout my life, and especially over the last eight years. My husband has dutifully put up with me, coming home. In the beginning, it was at midnight, I would leave in the morning, and he'd say, "I'll see you tomorrow." And listen to me rant and rave, you know, about, "Do you know what happened this time?" And, thank you. I might need to share. So, I want to thank all of you for being here and supporting me. And I definitely want to thank my fellow board members. It has been a joy to serve on this board particularly, because it has been so professional, and so, such a group, a group of such committed people. Susan, as you leave the board, you know, also, you have just made such a tremendous contribution, and you really, you know, just have been sort of a pillar of commitment to the board. And so, I appreciate everything that you have done, and the way that you have helped to make our board even better. And Monique, of course, you know, I have to just say it, we needed another Latina voice on this board. And thank you so much for being there. Monique says that I encouraged her, but really, she just asked me what I thought, and I told her the truth, and that was that she was a great candidate, and she should run. And boy, has she been a tremendous asset to the board as well. Monique, you just hit the ground running, and you are so involved with the community. It is, it is just an honor to have served with you, even for a short time. Kate, you're like the, you should be the poster child for what a school board member should be. You are, you do such a tremendous amount of homework. We could always count on you to bring any information that most, half the time, we didn't even know existed, and you found it on every issue that we could possibly imagine. You've just surpassed what I think anybody's expectation for a board member could possibly be. And Ed, it has been such a joy to work with you. You've been so gracious. You've just, even at the times that we have disagreed, and you, of course, are a little bit more to the right, I'm a lot more to the left. And there have been times that we have disagreed, and yet, we have, you have done it so graciously. And I really appreciate that. And you have also just always kept utmost in your mind the interests of the students. And I don't think we could ask for anything more than that from a board member. Of course, the staff, I mean, everybody here. Barbara and Dr. Cash, I have to just thank you so much for the translation tonight. I mean, that is a dream come true, so thank you. I know that was a gift, and it really is a gift to me, as well as to the whole community. Everybody, Meg, Marlin, God, this is gonna be bad. Dave, I mean, our, all of our newest members of the administrative staff, we've just added so many people. And of course, Mimi, the, I mean, we don't survive without you. So, I also want to acknowledge Lynn Rodriguez, who is a former board member, who is here with us in the, in the audience tonight. And Lynn was on the board when I was appointed. You were part of the reason I'm here. And I don't know if you even recall this, but you actually made a book of the kinds of responsibilities, and how much time you thought it took from a board member to serve. And at the time, I thought you were exaggerating. Then I came out, came to realize that, no, it even got worse. But thank you very much. You were also a mentor and a role model for me when I joined the board, so thank you. There's just too many people here to, Lain, I mean, to work with you for SPTA, I mean, everybody, there's so many people here, that it's from the community members, our staff members, everybody, Chris, who's brought me banana cream pie from Madonna Inn. It's, I mean, it's just been a great, great period to serve. And I, too, want to welcome Pedro and Gail. I think you are both, will both be wonderful additions to the board. I feel that the board will continue to be a really well-functioning, well-serving institution in your hands as well. So, thank you all. This is really amazing, and I appreciate my flowers, that are Don's colors. And that lifetime pass will get put to use. Thank you.
It is for two people.
You know, listening to Annette talk just reinforces what I've always believed, which is this is all about relationships, and working with people that are all committed to kids. And I have just learned so much in the last four years. Deciding not to run was probably one of the hardest decisions I've ever made, really, really tough. And that's why I'm so happy that we've got Pedro and Gail coming on the board, because I know that you're gonna work really seamlessly with the current board, and you've got some great people here to work with, Monique and Kate and Ed, and Annette has really characterized all their strengths, but you're gonna find out even more about them as people, and how much they have to offer. Sometimes people say, will come up to me and say, "Boy, being a school board member must be a thankless job." And the truth is, it's not, because people thank you all the time. And people come up to you, and they share with you all the positive things that are happening with their children in the schools, and they tell you about the teacher who's made a difference in their lives. You get to know wonderful parents who are dedicated to their children. I see three of them sitting here, who are regulars at our meetings, who have made a difference in the direction that our district has gone. And, you know, I'm really looking back on these four years with a lot of pride and accomplishment. We have accomplished so much. Our district is unified, we've changed, we've really made the Gate Honors Program what it should have been. Still got work there, but we hired Dr. Cash, which I think is really putting us in this terrific direction, because his work ethic is something that is unbelievable, and I think everyone gets energy from you and from the rest of the staff that's all working so hard. And I look at all the new faces and the faces over there that have been here through, throughout my four years, and I just think, wow, everybody works so hard in the interest of our kids. And so, it is bittersweet. It's very hard to say goodbye. I don't know if I'll start watching Channel 18 on Saturdays or not. But, you know, it's, being a public servant is something unlike anything else that you can ever do in your lifetime, and it really brings a lot of personal satisfaction, and rewards are passing the Kleenex down my way. But, you know, it wouldn't have been the experience it's been without my fellow board members, and I really, truly believe that we've become a very effective collegial board. We may not always agree, but we craft better decisions as a result of the discussions that we have, and that's the way it should be. So, I'm very hopeful about the future of our district. In some ways, I'm, after A and B passed and Prop 30 passed, I thought, darn, what am I doing leaving now, you know? But, but, but I, it's, you know, it's time for some new people, and I think that a district is always invigorated by new people with new ideas that come on to our board. So, we really look forward to a new board coming together. So, thank you for everything. It's been great, and we will all stay in touch. And as Ed and I, Annette and I realized, we can talk to more than just one other person now on the board. And now, we have work to do. And I didn't, oh, my husband, Jim, is leaving. I'm sorry, I forgot to mention you. Spouses know better than anybody else what it's like to be a school board member, and- Thank you. Okay. Dr. Cash, is there anything else in the superintendent's report, or have you concluded that?
I would like to make one announcement.
If I could, we have a new administrator that's joining us. Sierra Lowridge is our newest administrator for our child development programs. I'd like her to stand. She's standing, sitting with Debbie Badger tonight. Welcome. And that's it.
Board comments and correspondence, I'm not sure if we want to add to what we-
I had a lot of things, but I can't after all that, but I just, today's paper, I read that Claude Hardisty passed away, 103 years old. He was my principal at Santa Barbara High School 50 years ago. And I remember, I met him in 2008, in the lobby of the high school. He was picking up his tickets to a football game at 90, he was 99 then, so he just passed away. But also, Phyllis Zimmerman passed away, and she was the choir director, magical singer, magical director. I had the privilege of knowing Phyllis in a different way. She lived on our property for 25 years with Barbara Wright. And, you know, you read about her, and she was so strict, and so, you know, just down the line, but she had a part of her that was just nothing but fun, and we knew, we knew that side of her as she watched our children grow up, and during high school, playing basketball on our property during third period, and wondered why they were not at school. But with A and B, and Prop 30, and all the talk about music, I just have to read this. "One student captured her impact. Not everyone will understand the significance of a high school teacher passing away. Maybe only those of us who sang under her can understand. For some of us, singing was how we kept our, out of trouble. For others, it was how we found our passion, and for yet others, it gave us wings." I think that's what every teacher would hope, the legacy they would leave. And she was a wonderful lady, wonderful lady. And then I happened to go to, not happened, I was invited to go to McKinley. The Lions Club did a flag raising in honor of Veterans Day, and all 450 students were on the lawn. The wind was going, the bugle, bugler played, the Marine Corps raised the flag, and it waved, handed out flags to every kid, so here's 450 kids with a flag, and I got to tell them what the flag meant, which I never knew. But to see those kids, and then talking, one class invited the Marine Corps gentleman to the class and asked them questions about war. That was really interesting, to hear, I guess, third graders asking these Marines about their experiences in war and what that meant. It was just a beautiful day at McKinley, just a very, very special day. It's been a great last couple of weeks, that's for sure.
Ms. Lamont?
I had the opportunity to attend both an Ivy Thrive and a West Side Thrive meeting, and Dr. Droudi was actually there and led the meeting, gave us, those who were in attendance, a lot of information. But I actually wanted to share with all of you what their, Joanne Kane's the principal of La Cumbre Junior High School, in collaboration with Thrive, actually had little place, they're not place, that's their information about a student in everywhere, in every seat that was there, and there was different representatives from the community there, and really talked to us about the Posse Program, and what the Posse Program is. And we also had the opportunity to talk with the students, and act, and talk with San Marcos graduates, who are now in higher ed here in Santa Barbara, who work as mentors. And I really thought that it was really powerful, and so, I just want to thank Dr. Droudi- And I really thought that it was really powerful, and so I just want to thank Dr. Droudi and the team for doing what they do, because, again, so much of what we do is helping students believe in themselves and giving them the tools and resources so that they can achieve. And talking to these students was amazing. I mean, La Cumbre Junior High School students that were former McKinley Harding students, now at San Marcos, and really watching the pipeline at its best was amazing. The one I have in front of me is Alexis Charco, who is amazing. He's in, he's like beyond geometry and is on his way to taking calculus as a sophomore or junior or something of the sort. I mean, he's just, it was really amazing. So, this is exactly, I thought it was just neat, because during the whole meeting, two hours there, you're just reminded this is what it's about. So, I wanted to share that with the colleagues. And I also wanted to thank Santa Barbara City College, Santa Barbara Scholarship Foundation, and several organizations that actually put together the college fair last week. I had the opportunity to go to the college fair, and I know Mrs. Idelson was there, too, with her, two that she has left in Santa Barbara. And it was just, it was a wealth of information. So, I think yet again, we're so lucky in Santa Barbara to have organizations that help our students get information and access to next steps. It was incredible, hundreds and hundreds of students, lots of colleges and different programs. Did you go to? Yeah. Okay, of course, right? And Mrs. Parker was there. It was just, I thought, a great event, so I wanted to thank all those entities that were involved.
Mrs. Parker and I actually met Alexis, Joanne Caines introduced us to him one night at La Cumbre. He's an amazing student, fantastic, like so many of our students. Okay, well, we are going to move on now, then, to announcements of our closed session action. Items B1 and 2, we will return to on our action agenda. Item 3, Public Employee Appointment Assistant Superintendent Special Education, nothing to report out. Item 4, Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release. We had a motion by Parker, seconded by Cordero. The board voted five to zero on a resolution of dismissal number 2012-13-25 to approve the recommendation of the superintendent that a permanent certificated employee be dismissed. On number B5, the Casey waiver for graduation for students with disabilities, motion by Cordero, seconded by Parker, a five-zero vote to approve the Casey waiver for graduation for students with disabilities. And student discipline case, we will return to on our action agenda. So, we are now moving on to board, public comment.
We do have public comment. Kenneth Locke.
My name is Kenneth Locke. I spoke before the city council today, and I did a video this morning, which I put up on YouTube. It's called "What is a Mind Body Exercise?" And pretty much what I'm doing is I'm just, I'm just responding to my, I feel like I've been raised up as a teacher for this next age that we're going to be entering into, and all I'm doing is responding here, too, what I feel is a responsibility. And on this video, I kind of mentioned some basic concepts about the mind-body and the nature of a mind-body exercise. And I use, it's pretty much a graph, the graph and the idea of the plus-plus, minus-minus, and the idea that the means in which I'm explaining this is through my, my relationship I have with tennis, and I'm claiming to have witnessed an enlightenment through that discipline. And the idea that, the key is, is to get into the plus-plus area. And how that's understood, as I mentioned in this video, is that mentally, mental and physical is, is increasing mentally in relation to increasing physically. And right now, I'm sorry to say that through athletics right now, there's not a teacher who is teaching athletics in relation to that increase. Again, mental increase in relation to physical increase. And I'm hoping that changes. And what my relationship with tennis is that I'm developing, it's also can be understood as holistically healthy, holistic health, and I'm developing actually both arms. And the idea is two forehands, two backhands, two serves. It's, it's the idea is, once you take the competitive element, it's like, it's like understanding tennis in relation to yoga and the fact that yoga does not apply competition to its relationship, because it just doesn't, it doesn't belong there type of thing. And then, but the problem with athletics now is that with this competition, it actually, I'm sorry to say that it kind of limits, limits a person's mental increase, and then also there, it kind of retards the physical increase.
30 seconds.
Just, I just wanted to, again, respond, and as I spent, spoke before the city council today, as well as I'm taking the time to speak before you, and I'll probably continue while I'm in this community to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Locke. That concludes public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Locke. All right, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. There are no donations this evening. So, are there any consent agenda items that board members would like to pull for further discussion later? No? Mrs. Parker?
I don't want to pull anything, and I will move to approve the consent agenda as is. I do just want to point out item F5, the approval of the proposed professional development partnership between Antioch University, Santa Barbara, and Open Alternative School. I know that they came and gave a presentation. I was not able to be at that meeting, and I just wanted to say how encouraged I am that the school is looking for this kind of partnership and building professional development around progressive education, because it's really been lacking at the school, and it's something that's been sorely needed, and I hope it'll move the school in a new direction.
I'll second that motion.
F4.
Well, I will amend my emotion, then, to approve the consent agenda minus item F4.
And the second is fine with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, let's go ahead. Oh, and there was one item with the minutes that I took up with Ms. Hall. It's a minor detail, housekeeping detail, take care of. Okay, so, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes five-zero, and we will come back to F4. Which takes us right to the action agenda. G1, I promised we would be coming back to this one. I would just like to say that the board has spent a considerable amount of time in its job evaluating our superintendent. It's a job that we take very seriously and, which is probably why it took us so long. We're beyond thorough, I think, when it comes to this. We could probably sell our evaluation instrument for large amounts of money, but at any rate, we're very happy to be able to report that we're very pleased with Dr. Cash, and he gained a very positive performance evaluation. And as a result of that, and this will be something that we'll be voting on, before us is a ratification of the first extension and modification of the superintendent's employment agreement. It is customary for more school districts to have their superintendents on a three-year contract, and Dr. Cash's current contract expires at the end of the school year in 2014. And so, the motion before us today, the, this agreement, this extension agreement, would be to extend his contract by one more year until the end of June 2015. So, that is the motion before us today, and I would turn to board members now for a motion.
I would like to move to ratify the first extension and modification of the superintendent's employment agreement.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes five-zero. So, Dr. Cash, we've got you. Three full years now. I would like to mention, if anyone is interested in seeing a copy of that extension agreement, Ms. Kiani has copies of that available. Okay, and I would just like to say that it's a great thing that you're here, and we really appreciate the work you do, and we're looking forward, I know the district will really benefit from your continued presence in your job. Moving on to the second reading and adoption of board policy, 4119.21, 4219.21, and 4319.21, professional standards. This is something that has come back to us. We did discuss it previously, and now it is before us as an action item. So, could we get this up on the screen, please?
You had asked that I take it out to the principals and get some feedback regarding it, and the feedback was unanimously supportive of the language.
Do you want to scroll up so that we can see the additional language that we added? Okay, you can stop right there. So, we added in, "Or inappropriate use of profanity or obscene language or gestures." Okay. Any discussion on this language? Meets everyone's expectations of, based on our prior discussion.
After an hour's of discussion, to make one word change, that's pretty good.
Yet another example of how thorough we are. Well, I think the decision to go back and out and talk to the site staff, I think Dr. Cash already knew what they would say, but it was good for us to hear that, and, you know, we like to make sure that when we make a policy change or an addition, that the staff is fully aware of what we're doing and why. Okay, do we have a motion on this item?
Move to approve the adoption of board policy, 4119.21, 4219.21, and 4319.21.
Second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes five-zero. Our next item is approval to cancel the November 27, 2012 regular board meeting because of Thanksgiving, and staff will not be available prior to this meeting.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Staff is really disappointed about that, I can tell. Okay, we're now going to move on to approval of tele-parent notification system contract for 2012-13. Ms. Kiani.
Well, I'm bringing forward the contract that we renew annually with tele-parent, and this year, we were able to get the contract for $1.45 per student, which is definitely very good. We've been with tele-parent now for about five years, and I think, I don't know if you have any questions on the contract that you see before you? Okay.
Nope. I think it's been very effective. I don't think we have any, Mrs. Parker?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any questions, per se. I have children at three different schools, so I have tele-parent coming from the district, from three different schools, and it is really effective. And I know that sometimes we have parents that get frustrated because they don't want to keep getting calls from their kid's school, but I think the vast majority of parents really appreciate it, and there have been times when it's been really critical. So, I was so pleased when we first brought it in, and I think it's a great tool. I'm glad that our charter schools are able to benefit from sort of our contract with them, too, so that's great.
It's served us well, especially during emergencies.
I would like to add that Barbara's done an incredible job. There are many vendors providing a service like this, and Barbara's done an incredible job at sifting through the information to make sure we have the best service at the best price.
Well, and I think, I've been really impressed with the creative ways that you've put it to use. I mean, beyond, you know, some of the things that are just the standard, so much appreciated.
Good. I'm glad to hear that.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve the tele-parent notification system contract for 2012-2013.
Second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes five-zero. Why don't you stay right there, and we're going to move on to approval of Measure Q and our Citizens Bond Oversight Committee member changes.
There were two items that I wanted to bring to your attention. First is a shift in seats, because as you know, we have seven designated chairs on the committee, and we lost two of our parents' representatives. Uh, let's see, wait a minute, let me make sure, let me go back. Yeah, basically, we lost, we lost basically two business representatives, and we have somebody who was serving in apparent capacity, Mark Ingalls. I don't think Mark's here any longer, and so we just wanted to shift his chair so that he fills the business side of the house, because he has many constituencies that he serves, and he said he'd be happy to do that. So, it's kind of a technical change on the Measure Q committee.
It's nice to have that continuity, and he certainly is active in the business community, so makes good sense to me. Mrs. Parker?
I'm just so grateful for the citizens that are willing to put the time in and effort in, and it is, take time, and it is work, to fulfill this role so that we can show our community that we are using the funds that they provided for us appropriately. And I'd like to move to approve the Measure Q and our Citizens Bond Oversight Committee member changes.
Second?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes five-zero. And we have one more addition.
Correct, this is Measure R. We lost one of our parent representatives, and actually, we had three applications come in. One of them withdrew, the second one, the third one decided that she would like to wait until an opening came up on a committee that she wants to serve on, so she said, just keep my name on file. And then also, we got one that came in today, but we will hold, I'll contact that individual and again, hold his name for an upcoming, an opening that we have in the future. Now that we have A and B committees coming up, rolling over, we'll hopefully have spaces for them as well when we need them. So, this is to approve Deborah Vance to become the Measure R parent representative.
You know, actually, we already voted on Measure R without hearing that. I was taking care of B5 without, I had looked at the details, but without hearing the...
Okay.
So, that was Q and R. I thought we weren't talking about Measure I. Yeah.
So, we're good?
We both had, we all had a chance to read it in advance, so...
So, now we're on to Measure I.
Oh, that's Frank Stevens. And Frank has served on the committee before, and he took a hiatus and has indicated his willingness to come back. So, if the board approves his position back on the committee, then he will be representing the senior constituency.
Move to approve Frank Stevens to the Oversight Committee, Citizens Oversight Committee for Measure I, Parcel Tax.
Second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. And I would just like to really thank Mr. Stevens for all of his hard work on passing A and B, because he was really out there in the trenches, and I think it's very appropriate and fitting that he will serve on a parcel tax committee once again. I think he got re-energized as a part of the campaign, and now is coming back to work with us, which is terrific.
And I asked him if he had the name of a senior, because he's very well-connected to the Retired Teachers Association, and he said, I want to serve. I said, okay.
Good. Good. Great. Thank you very much. By the way, is your banner, the one that you got your award for, is the one that we see as we walk in? It's beautiful, really. I can see why you won, and it's really very nicely done.
Just this past weekend, she received her award.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, we've now moved to G7, Board Action on the Student Discipline Case Number 1213-02. Mrs. Parker?
In case number 12/13-02, I move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel for a full expulsion for a school year ending in June 2013, with the understanding that this is a unique expulsion case that requires close association with the county to find a, an appropriate and effective placement.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, say aye. Oh, any discussion?
Well, I'd just like to reiterate my concern because of the student's age, that prior to knowing what the... that prior to knowing what the outcome of the discussions with the county would be, I am not willing to support a full-year expulsion.
Okay. All right, well, we'll call the vote, then. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
No, okay. Motion passes three-two, Cordero and Limon dissenting. Okay, we're going to move next to our conference agenda. The first item up, keeping in the spirit of our parcel taxes, is our annual report by the Citizens Parcel Tax Oversight Committee on Measure H. And I see some people in the audience that I know have been serving on that committee. And Dr. Cash, do you want to give us the introduction to this? Ms. Chute?
Ms. Chute is.
Good evening. I would like to introduce Karen Kearns. She's been a committee, Measure H two thousand and eight committee chair for two years. She has her bachelor's degree in music and is now currently a member of the Symphony in the Bowl. Thank you.
Thank you. I never know how close you have to stand to this. Thank you for the introduction and the opportunity to report to the board, and it seems fitting to be able to prepare and present this report on the night when you're congratulating the Education Foundation for its support of the measures A and B. And, give me that slide, okay. So as you know, the Measure H is the secondary education tax, parcel tax, that was passed in two thousand and eight, specific to the junior and senior high schools. As set forth here, it was a twenty-three-dollar per parcel tax that primarily in the junior highs focused on math, science, technology, music, arts, and theater, and foreign language. And in the high schools, it was foreign language, and it restored the ninth-grade class sizes. And the goal on that was a twenty-to-one ratio. So this is basically year three, actually, this is year four, school year four, of this particular parcel tax. The committee members are mentioned here, and Jean Waving has been on the committee, I think, the whole four years. And I appreciate her attendance at tonight's meeting. The Measure H, we were very active this past year. We had six meetings during the course of the school year. And in addition to that, each of the committee members visited between us. We visited every single junior and senior high school to see how the parcel taxes were being used. And we met with either the site principal or whoever they designated for us. And the committee felt that those meetings were really instrumental in our understanding of how the tax dollars are spent and were very valuable to us as a committee. And as Jean and I were speaking tonight, it's just plain fun to go out to the schools and see not only the creative ways that the students are being educated, but to see the cause and effect that's real direct between some extra funds and what the students can get from that funding. So, the bylaws for these committees were developed by, it was probably somebody in Sacramento, and we're required to make this report to you every year, to tell you the basic things that are set out in the slide, self-explanatory, and to make a determination as the taxpayer citizens of whether we believe the money was spent in accordance with the resolution and the voter language. So the slideshow you're seeing right now relates to the last school year, so it was two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve. And we finished our site visits in April. The beginning fund balance at the sixty-seven thousand eight hundred sixty was actually carryover from the prior year. I think at the beginning of the parcel tax funding, it took a little bit for the schools to get to the point where they were spending the money immediately when they got it. And so that's no longer a problem. The sixty-seven thousand that carried over then was spent in the school year of eleven, twelve. The total expenditures were a million two hundred, one thousand seven hundred eighty-six dollars, and that was money that comes from actually about forty-eight thousand parcels. And that's just the high school side of it. The ending fund balance that shows then carried over to this year. The teaching positions.
Can I have a question on that last slide? Maybe Meg can answer. What was transferred in from the general fund, two hundred and eight thousand dollars?
This was basically done in error. In the previous years, we have had all the parcel tax people coming out of the parcel tax, all the FTEs. And for some reason, in eleven, twelve, some of them weren't. So at the end of the year, I said, "We have to have a contribution to cover the general fund side of the class size reduction." And so I told them to move the two hundred and eight thousand over there, and then realized after we closed the books that that money didn't belong over there, because the people weren't taken out of parcel tax, they were actually out of the general fund. So that is, that two hundred and eight thousand really should go back to the general fund and probably already has been done in first interim.
Thank you.
The teaching positions that were funded are explained here, and one of the items that the committee spent a lot of focus on was the ninth-grade class size reduction, because throughout the first three years of the parcel tax, that was definitely a moving target. And by the time we made our site visits in April, we felt that all the schools really had a clear understanding that it was very important to us that that was an important component to the math education of the classes that were primarily ninth grade. And we also learned that most of those ninth-grade classes also had, in addition to the certificated teacher, they had one or more student tutors and one or more UCSB students. So in reality, even though the number might show twenty-to-one, often it was more like five-to-one. And we feel that that benefit doesn't get recognized anywhere, so I wanted to mention it to you tonight. Okay, this chart gets to the meat of the money spent, and you'll see the green is the budget and the purple is the unaudited actials. And the overall budgeting was very close to the actual expenditures, except for capital outlay, which I'm happy to say was almost nothing. And you'll see on the next slide where each of the sites spend their money. It's important to note that the site allocations of the funds is done on an ADA basis. So some of the pies that look bigger for some schools, that's because of their ADA. It's not for any other reason. And you'll see that particularly at the junior high level, kind of going back to the other slide, sorry, the theater arts and music really, really benefited in the junior high. And I think all the different programs benefited. But you can see the orange is the junior high, three hundred and forty thousand dollars, and without the parcel tax, that money wouldn't have been there. And the site allocations is self-explanatory. This is the last year of the Measure H parcel tax. And as the board's looking at it rolling over into, or not rolling, but a new parcel tax being passed for the next fiscal year, I think there's demonstrated here that all the sites use their money. And in the committee's site visits and review of the basic financial information we were provided, we determined that the parcel tax funding was appropriately used by the district and the sites. And wanted to report to you that we're pleased with the outcome of the twenty-eleven, twelve school year expenditures.
I think Mrs. Parker has a question.
I do, just for the public's sake on this, because I think that sometimes these two pie charts, we've seen members of the public get confused about, because there's a tendency to think, well, these small amounts that are going to site allocations, you know, what is, how does that compare to the expenditure by program? What's the relationship between the two? And so maybe you can explain that for members of the public. The way I look at it, I see the site expenditures as essentially supplies when we have the funding for tech supplies or science, things like that, that fall within the bailiwick of the parcel tax. Whereas the programming, I think you're including on the district side of things, I suppose, these were teachers that went to all of the junior highs and all of the high schools that came, and the funding came from the parcel tax, but it's just not divvied up in the same way. It's divvied up by program instead of by school, which you could have done it by school in this section as well. Correct?
Do you want to respond to that, Meg?
That's correct. What we do is we, the music teachers are all through the elementary school, and then the junior high schools, that comes right off the top. And that's, they go out to the sites and they support all the sites. So you don't really get to see that in this portion. This is like their discretion to do what they want with the money within the parcel tax, you know, programs.
Does that provide enough information?
I think so.
Okay. So there was almost a million two hundred thousand dollars of parcel tax money that was used by the sites, and the committee feels it was put to good use. And we appreciate the assistance of all the staff that helped us put the meetings together and prepare the slideshows and give our students the opportunities they have for these special things as part of their education. So thank you. Are there any other questions or questions from the public?
Mrs. Parker?
Well, I just want to say thank you, because I think that you guys have done a tremendous job and have put in a lot of work for us, for our students. And one of the things that frustrated me the most, as we were going through the campaigns for Measures W and X and with Measures A and B, were when the media, you know, certain news organizations or in certain members of the community would come out and say, "Well, you know, how do we know how they're going to spend this parcel tax money?" And I'm going, "We have a record. We have a strong record." And I don't know that they didn't understand that you're an independent oversight committee. You do report to the board, but, you know, you're not employees of the district. And I feel like we get so much valuable information from the work that these committees have done, and you're holding us accountable. It's really critically important. And I just, I wish that the larger community fully understood that.
I think as a goal for the committee, the communication going out, not just to the parents at the schools, but to the overall voting community, is an area that can be enhanced.
That's a great idea. And you've been a very articulate spokesperson for this, and I think that we really benefit from all the members on the committee going out and talking to the public and being able to explain it, because you know better than anybody how, you know, that it is citizen oversight, in fact, that is taking place here. So appreciate that very much.
Great work done by a group of dedicated volunteers here. It's really fantastic.
Okay, we're going to move on to our discussion of the Academic Performance Index. Dr. Cash?
Well, every year, schools in our district receive a three-digit number. Some year, we might get a four-digit number. A three-digit number that represents the Academic Performance Index. In addition to that, we are required by No Child Left Behind to report our adequate, or our progress in the number of students proficient and or advanced in English Language Arts and Math, and to meet the targets as set by No Child Left Behind, with a reminder that the target for next year, twenty thirteen, fourteen, is one hundred percent. The Academic Performance Index, as board members are aware, is comprised of the California Standards Test and the California High School Exit Exam for our high school students. It is based upon a very specific formula that's calculated by the CDE in relationship to the number of students who are proficient or advanced in various grade levels and in various grade spans as well. And with the California High School Exit Exam, it's the number of students who pass in March or in their tenth grade that counts. Well, sometimes it's February, February or March. What, a very unique thing, my present, part of the presentation is very short tonight, because we only have one year of an Academic Performance Index for the Santa Barbara Unified School District this year. So it's difficult, really, absent the detailed information you're going to get from Mr. Handel and Dr. Drotti about our elementary schools and our secondary schools to talk about it other than in the abstract. Our Unified School District API was eight oh eight, and, which is above the magical eight-hundred number. But as I shared with the community in my State of the Schools message, we still have a lot of work to do with many of our students. I'm looking forward to having you hear from Mr. Handel and Dr. Drotti about how our elementary and secondary schools did. And so I'll turn it over. We're going to go from K through six to seven through twelve. So, Mr. Handel, you're up.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. First off, I want to let you know that what we did this time in presenting the information is put together five years so that you guys could see the trends versus growth from one year to another, because sometimes we see spikes and we see leveling it off. And we thought if we gave you the trends over the last half-decade, that would give you a better view of what's happening in the district in terms of growth. So this next slide, I know there's a lot of lines going in a lot of different places. But what you'll see, if you look at it closely, is that thirteen out of the ten schools that are on the graph there are all projecting at a positive rate, at five, anywhere from the state limit, or excuse me, the state minimum of five API points improvement, all the way to averaging nearly thirty points jump every year. We have three schools that we'll notice, and we'll go to the next slide, that you'll notice have negative growth at this point. We wanted to put that out so that you guys could see, you know, the average yearly growth that ranges, again, anywhere from a negative twelve and a half points to a positive twenty-eight and a half points. Each school, let me remind you, is different and unique in its needs. There are varying needs at each site, and we are going to be working with every single site on the needs for each one of their, each one of their sites and their plans to address it. Are there any questions? Did you guys have time to take a look at this? Okay, good.
Can you, average yearly growth, that's not a five-year average yearly growth, is it?
Five years, yes. Over five years, the average growth per year, excuse me. So if you look at McKinley, over the past five years, they had a growth of about twenty-eight and a half point jumps every year. You look at a school site like Washington, where they're at the upper level, they're in the nine hundreds, but they're still eking out growth on average of nine points, which is pretty good considering where they're at right now. They're topped out. When you see a school like Cleveland that is, has a negative trend at this point over the last five years, that they've been trending down at fourteen and three-quarters every year for the last five years on average.
Can you, as a refresher for the public, talk about being Title I or not Title I in terms of how that affects your program improvement status?
Well, being Title I, well, when you have Title I, NCLB kicks in, No Child Left Behind, legislation and accountability kicks in. And when you're Title I, you also receive the appropriate funding that comes with Title I, where you have, and Title I means that you have children at your school site that at bare minimum, you have about thirty-five percent of your students that are qualified for free and reduced lunch. So with that funding, again, comes accountability. Accountability in your proficiency levels, the number of students, or the percentage of students that have to meet proficiency or advanced levels in both Language Arts and Math. So you'll see PI status up there. Each year, as you guys are well-versed, the targets get higher and higher and higher. And when you don't meet that growth, or you don't meet a, what the state deems significant growth towards that goal, you eventually get into program improvement status if for two years in a row, you don't meet those goals. So what you see up in the graph up here is, let's say, Adams School. They're in their third year of program improvement, meaning that for two years, they didn't meet their targets. And the following three years, they also didn't meet their target. So they're now in program improvement year three. You look at a school like Harding, who has been PI for more than five years. The highest you can go is five years. And then you look at a school like Washington that doesn't qualify for Title I. While they're not held to the same accountability. While they're not held to the same accountability, well, they are held to the same accountability, they are not a Title One school. They don't receive Title One funding. So they're somewhat exempt from being a program improvement school.
Thank you. I think, I think people forget that sometimes. And so it's, it's nice to.
Get a refresher.
Yeah. Mrs. Parker?
I just want to say that I really appreciate actually seeing this five-year average. It's not a way that we've looked at it in the past and, and we've looked at the sort of trends and sometimes you see the up and down, but to have it sort of called out specifically, I think it really helps us identify the schools that over the long term, you know, they may have a spike up or a spike down, that they, the ones that we really need to be assisting right now.
Right.
And turning, turning that around.
Yeah, we completely agree. We do see some, some big jumps where, where our schools can't sustain the growth and it's hard, they level off after a big jump. So we thought this graph would best help represent that.
Mr. Handel, you may be actually talking about this, I see in the later slides.
Yes, ma'am.
But, I mean, what happens next with some of the schools that we identify and need the most support?
We're going to get to that. I want to let Dr. Drotti report out in the secondary and we'll get to the details.
Thanks.
We got this presentation organized in a certain, in a certain way.
So I won't mess it up, all right?
Messing up our flow, huh? What you have here is the junior high schools. And we use the same data points and the average yearly growth. And you'll see with the junior high schools, the four of them, that they've had relatively decent, good growth. And the fact that they're, all of them are over 800, with La Calina being the closest to 900. And that's, that's pretty spectacular. Why don't you go to the next slide? So as you see there, they're in double-digit growth. La Calina, I think Dr., Mr. Handel explained already what Title One is or what's not Title One and how PI status is classified. So La Calina is not a Title One school, so that's why we don't see the title marking. Secondary, they're all secondary, but the high schools, as you can see, their growth doesn't fare as well as the the junior high schools with, obviously with the lowest number down there being La Cuesta, with it trending downwards and with Alta Vista. But you'll see that the, the other four, the other three high schools are clustered up there, which includes Santa Barbara Charter Middle.
Ms., Dr. Drotti, can you just go back to that last slide for just a second?
Yes.
A couple of things came to mind when I was looking at this for Alta Vista and La Cuesta. First of all, these are, this is a very small school, very small sample size, correct?
Yes.
So there's bound to be more fluctuation in a smaller sample. Did the population change? The student population makeup change between 2008 and now? I know you weren't here, but.
You're, yeah, you're right. But naturally, in a, in a alternate setting, the transiguancy is a lot more. You have students coming from other districts, from our own internal districts. So there's always a change over there.
That's a really good observation because when, when, when the API was created, I was really shocked. And they didn't, for a while, include continuation schools. They had a very different measurement. But because the transiguancy nature, and some students will be in and out of the school, be there for one year, won't be there for three years. It's tough to really measure. It's so much different than our traditional high schools where you pretty much, the majority of the students are there for four years. It's much less, and I believe insightful about the instructional program than the high school, the traditional high school reporting. That's, that's an excellent observation.
And we always need to remember that these schools are all different. And so in some, I mean, well, the, the traditional high school is more similar than different. But still, when we're looking at, at a variety of schools, we have to consider the populations at those schools.
Mrs. Deacon?
Yes.
One thing I also really want to point out to members of the public is that when we're talking about a school API, it can be incredibly misleading. And I always, I fear for parents who look at an overall school API without looking at subgroups because it can, it can completely mask what's going on at the subgroup level. So if your student is an English learner and you think, I'm going to go to this school, well, it may turn out that English learners are scoring 100 points higher at another school, but there's just such a small population that it, that it doesn't show. And, you know, the, this, it's true for every single subgroup. So parents need to look deeper than this, what I consider pretty superficial and glance at how students are doing. So, you know, I hate it when I see news reports about overall scores because it doesn't really tell the true picture.
Well, to address that, why don't you go back? Let's go to, back one more time to junior high. If you look at the junior highs, and one may say La Cumbre, for example, is, is at a, has the lowest overall API. But if you, but if you compare La Cumbre to the similar school rankings, for those that understand, when you, when you compare similar school rankings, when schools are being measured, they're clustered in schools that are, that look like them, those clusters. So, so in the school, similar school ranking, there's two rankings that exist. The first number is basically overall ranking in the, in the, in the state. And the second number there is their ranking in, in that cluster of schools. So, for example, La Cumbre is a, what we call a 610. 610, meaning in that cluster, they are, they are number one, one of the, one of the top schools. Whereas if you measure overall, there are six, but the difference there, when they measure the cluster, they look at students, the demographic population of the schools, socioeconomic, economic status, EL, EL status, all the different demographic numbers that we look at in calculating API. So that's, so that's how you would, I guess, you know, rationalize where somebody can say La Cumbre is not doing, not doing that great of a job. Yeah, they are, but you got to look at the similar school rankings.
And we would encourage parents to visit schools. I mean, from my perspective, there is so much more to gain from actually being on a campus, talking to the staff, where they will also give parents the data than there is just at looking at the data. I couldn't agree more that this is very superficial. But it is what we've got. For now.
So we wanted to, we wanted to point out a couple of the challenges that, that we all face. And one is the current legislation of No Child Left Behind and the pressure on principals and staff to exit program improvement status. That puts a lot of pressure on folks because it can narrow your vision to where you only see what's in front of you and you lose the larger scope of education. And I think for at least the last 12, 15 years, we've become very myopic in terms of how we look at education. So that's, that's a challenge for us. Another piece is, of course, improving Academic Performance Index. And that goes hand in hand. You know, that's a state, a state performance measure and NCLB being the federal measure. So again, our, our focus becomes too myopic. But the opportunity we believe we have for growth right now is our transition in the Common Core standards. We believe that's going to give us a great opportunity to get back to what many of our educators got into the business of education for. Being very creative, being able to put together units that are more integrated, being able to do things that are more hands-on, more applicable to the real world. And we feel that's going to give us a great opportunity as we go through this transition with our teachers to provide a better education, a better, well-rounded education, and what we believe will be higher achievement levels.
Just to add to the opportunities Mr. Handel mentioned with the Common Core. As we develop a staff development and as we plan for the Common Core, in the past, Ms. Emilio and we're both principals, the toughest thing to do is to separate the teacher from the textbook or, you know, because they're tied to that textbook. And so when you ask a question about options, we often ask a question, okay, what are student learners here who are wearing chapter two? Without really clarity on what chapter two is. We don't have textbooks for the Common Core. And we have to focus on, on the Common Core state standards. That forces us to really look at those standards and really understand them and work together at dissecting them.
So we believe that's going to be our biggest opportunity to improve student improvement, student academic achievement. But finally, I think the big piece, and one locally that we've had some local relief, is the continued impact of the drastic budget cuts. In so many different ways, these cuts have impacted our students, from cutting our counselors that provide so much support to our students, to all the different support staff, larger class sizes, which we know impacts student learning. But our staff, our teachers, and our principals have done such a career, such an incredible job of, of this upward trend of student achievement. They need to be applauded for all the great work they're doing in spite of all the challenges they have with all these cuts. It's amazing what we've been able to do with all the funding that we have. And so I'd like to give a big kudos to all of our teachers, all of our support staff, all of our principals, and all the folks that work so hard at the, at each site and here at the district office to provide that support and work even harder with the dwindling funds.
And then just one, one, one piece there is, as we, one thing about the budget cuts it's done is it has allowed us to rely on ourselves, educators, and also to not rely, rely on our own intellect. And we have to become more, we have to become more strategic in how we approach things. You know, so when resources are taken away from you, you still got to have staff development. You still got to do all the things that you're supposed to do. And you still got to continue to grow. And that forces each person to be a lot more strategic in how you approach things.
So how? That's the big question, you know, what do we do? Well, Dr. Drotti and I and Dr. Cash believe that the professional learning communities are going to serve as the vehicle as, as, to improve student achievement, transition from our Common Core to our Common Core standards. Create the tailored plan for each site because as you guys mentioned, and as I mentioned earlier, each site is different. From Washington to Franklin, to Dos Pueblos, to Santa Barbara, La Cumbre, La Calina, their needs are different. So their plans are going to be well thought out, well put together, going through a process with their staff and with their school site councils. So they can look at each one of the programs that they have in place and evaluate them and see if they're working. If they're not working, or are they going to get rid of them or are they going to tweak them a little bit? So each site is going to design a plan that specifically meets their needs for each one of their sites. And Dr. Drotti and I are going to work with each one of the principals on their plans. And then we're also going to have our, our collaborative process, which we hope, well, I think we're going to have it in January, where board members will do their round robin again and we'll go through all the, the plans and take a nice look at them and give our folks feedback so that everyone has a good understanding of what each site needs to do in order to best meet the needs of their populations. Another, you want, you want to do the second?
I'm talking to Mike this time, didn't realize we had film, so. The power, the power of PLC is, the whole thing has to be driven through there as Dr., Mr. Handel mentioned. If you look at, for example, the secondaries, the three, the three junior high schools compared to the high schools. And I would say just by, based on my own observation, I can pinpoint that to the implementation of PLCs. That's the separation between the high schools and the junior highs. At the junior highs, they're a lot more collegial. They, we, when they are assessing their students, diagnosing, assessing, they are measuring, they have internal measures. They also have external measures that they measure against each other. As a result, and then they're able to take that external measure to measure which is ultimate measure, which is the, which is the state test. So at the high school, it's a lot more challenging. I mean, you have certain departments have that, but we don't really have a comprehensive plan, plan that junior highs have at the, at the high school. So, so right now, we, I can go to the junior highs and say, how are our students doing? They will be able to tell me based on those assessments. Whereas at the secondary level, I would have to go to each high school. But each high school, I mean, your, your assessment is only as good as what you know in your own system. And so, so the plan is to really infuse the PLCs in our systems. And it'll be the same thing for, for the elementaries.
Can I ask a quick question about that? The PLCs at the secondary level, do schools collaborate with each other? Or do they, or say, does a science department at one high school only work with other biology teachers? Or do they talk to the other schools as well?
At the, at the junior high, they do, they do that a lot more readily with, with English and at math. At the high school level, the teachers are excited about the opportunity and we have actually restructured, restructured what we call our PLC leaders to be able to start collaborating. And we'll share a lot more about those plans when, when, when you meet with the teams. But that's going to be the first thing to do, first, get them in teams to start working together and start planning.
The theory of action that Emilio and Ben are working on is that teacher leadership is the, is the really the lever or the lever, the driver of change in our, in our school system. And so when you see when they present the model that they're working on with teachers.
You'll see that, that they really have developed the teacher leader model and with facilitators and PLC team leaders. And it's, I've just watched it. People are very excited about the, the potential.
Ms. Limon and I were at a PSTEM council meeting this morning and someone, actually the professor from UCSB said, you know, PLCs look different all over the country. And it made me think, wow, I wonder, you know, what model our PLCs are. But I think ultimately, it's whatever works best for you, you know, and for your staff.
We agree. I think Dr. Cash and Dr. Drotti were able to come with different eyes and take a look at what they've seen PLCs are, are, how they're being utilized in other districts and being able to give some feedback to what we were doing here in the Santa Barbara Unified School District. Another big piece of, of, of our change, our improvement, we believe is identifying and utilizing district-wide common assessments. That's something, believe it or not, that we have not been doing at the secondary level. And Dr. Drotti's working real hard on that. At the elementary level, we have, we have been doing that using common assessments, which I'll be giving you more information about after all of our schools are done actually taking the assessments. We're also in the process of creating time for PLC meetings, which has been quite a process. Some schools had them already in place. Other schools, it's a new endeavor for them. So we're helping our schools work through that process. It can be a little murky. But we're finding that teachers are really excited about getting the opportunity to meet with other teachers and discuss everything from, from data to lesson plans and what have you. And finally, we're going to be using.
That was particularly challenging at the, at the, at the high school. I think there's Santa Barbara High School was a lone school that didn't have a collaboration time. But with the help of Lane Wheeler and SBTA, we were able to get an agreement. Now, now every, at least in the secondaries, every school has some sort of time to collaborate. So that's, that was a major victory and that's moving forward.
So finally, we, we also believe that data that we're all going to be using. We're going to be, leave it alone, Ben. So we believe that our, we're going to use a common walkthrough tool that we're going to be able, teachers are going to be able to, excuse me, principals are going to be able to use to calibrate the information they gather from their, their informal walkthroughs. Give teachers specific feedback on the needs of, well, what they're seeing in the classroom and what they're not seeing in classroom. We think that's going to be a big piece for us to provide that type of feedback to teachers on an individual basis. Any questions?
Could we get the lights back up, please? Well, first of all, thank you for this. It's in a format that I think is really, as Mrs. Parker mentioned, much more readily accessible. And seeing the five-year trends is really helpful. I, I guess the one question I had, and Dr. Cash, you were just with a group of other superintendents from across the nation. The, given the outcome of the election, I, I know that Congress has been kind of dancing around reauthorization of the, you know, I guess they don't like to call it No Child Left Behind anymore, but the National Educate, Elementary and Secondary Education Act. Are there any thoughts about what's going to happen in terms of this?
Yeah, there's a, the overwhelming belief, I would say, 90 to 100% of the superintendents that I was with, that was 100 districts in, across the nation, is we're going to move to a growth model similar to the construct of the Academic Performance Index, where it is an expectation that there's ongoing growth as opposed to absolutes, which is what AYP or No Child Left Behind was based on. And there's a lot of interest, and there are more states, though it hasn't been widely reported. And there's a lot of interest, and there are more states, though it hasn't been widely reported, that are gonna be like California, that are going to be including more kind of end game sorts of results, college and career readiness results in the, this, whatever the evaluation number's gonna be or letter grade will be. So, there's a, there's a lot of belief that that will be a significant component as well. So, on the, in this group, are two people that are, will be testifying in front of Congress and the Senate in February, I believe. So, I, when I heard that, I, that was the first I had heard that it was actually gonna be considered after the lame duck. So, that's exciting to hear, because it's just been, as you said, just in the background for a long time. So, maybe during this first year of President Obama's second term, there might actually be some resolution. I know we're certainly waiting for it.
Absolutely, and we can give feedback to our elected representatives. Mr. Heron?
Yes, we have, we have six schools in year five. Should we be worried about that? Is something gonna happen with those?
No. You know, the original, that, that idea is based on the construct that was originally around before adequate yearly progress, where a student, where a school, excuse me, that would, would be required to engage in very specific behaviors that the state would mandate. But because there's kind of a belief in the California Department of Education that the targeted goals set by the federal government are unrealistic, there haven't been any sanctions other than labeling the schools.
Okay, well, thank you so much. And I know in January, the, the newly comprised board will look forward to, to hearing about the plans from each of the schools. We're gonna take a quick 10-minute break right now and come back to the remainder of our consent agenda. So, we'll be back in 10 minutes. Thanks.